Welcome to the Eastern School Committee virtual meeting, Thursday, June 4th, 2020. I'm going to call the meeting to order and then I'm going to make a motion to enter into an executive session and we will return to discuss strategy with respect to collective marketing in the food service unit. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
And we need a roll call. Caroline?
O'Neil, yes.
Dariance, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Okay, we will be back.
I'm in the right place, right?
Yes. Yes, you are.
I was the first one in for once and I thought, did I do something wrong?
All right. So we're waiting for Leisha and who else? Anybody? Chrissy's not coming?
I think that's what Leisha said, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I believe we're all here right now, as far as I know. And I assume ECAT's on board someplace.
I see, I see Joe connected.
Okay, then that's ECAT. All right, everybody. Welcome back to Easton School Committee Meeting of Thursday, June 4th, 2020. The next item on the agenda are the minutes of May 8th. Does anyone have any comments, corrections? Discussion? May 8th.
They look good to me.
Caroline, no comment? Wow, okay. Do I have a motion?
My screen anyway. I'm looking for this.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of Friday, May 8th, 2020?
So moved, star.
Do I need a second?
Second, Durant.
Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Okay, and while we're at it, Lynn, thank you for doing such a great job on all these minutes and everything. You're wonderful. Next up, personnel changes. Dr. Cabral.
So we had, just going back for a second, we had offered, as part of our many attempts to close the budget this school year, we offered an early resignation incentive in this district to every bargaining unit, except one. And we actually received seven of those, which was helpful. We haven't closed the budget yet, as you'll hear in the budget presentation, but it was helpful. And once again, I'm sad to present to you, it is bittersweet, five of those very senior experienced professionals that we will be losing at the end of this school year. Do you have the?
I do, I do. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Why don't you do it in the, I don't know what order you have the letters, so perhaps?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'll, the first one I have is Lois Coyne.
Okay, so Lois Coyne's been with EPS for 22 years now. She's currently a social studies teacher at Easton Middle School, and she plans to retire at the end of the school year. One of those very professional, kind people, and I'm sure her letter will reflect that.
Hello, Dr. Cabral. I wanted to officially inform you that I have decided to retire this year. I have thoroughly enjoyed my 20-plus years in Easton, and my boys could not have had a better experience in this district. My decision comes with much trepidation, but after much consideration, I feel it is the right thing to do. You are so fortunate to have so many impressive and motivated newly hired teachers on your staff that I hope I will be able to stay and be part of the EPS team that I was fortunate enough to be part of all these years. This was quite a difficult decision, but I feel it is the right one. Seeley Lois Coyne. And Lois, I was also a seventh grade teacher, and she was on the blue team for a while, and now most recently on the orange team. And just a real, a real great teacher and well-liked by her students, so she'll be missed.
Definitely, definitely a loss to the students and for us as well.
Does anyone else want to make any comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Lois Coyne's retirement with regret.
Second.
Durant, second, okay.
O'Neil, yes, with regret. O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. The next one I have is Linda, but I don't know how to say her last name.
Girar. Linda began with the Easton Public Schools 34 years ago. 13 years ago, she was appointed to the kitchen manager position at Parkview Elementary School. She's decided to retire on June 19th.
Dear Alicia Cabral, I have been an Easton Town employee off and on since 1986. The last 13 years has been at Parkview School as a kitchen manager. It has been a wonderful place to work. I have made a lot of wonderful friends. I have decided to retire this year because of health issues. It was one of the hardest decisions I ever had to make. My retirement date will be June 19th, 2020. Thank you for the wonderful experience I have had. And I have nothing, I don't know who she is.
She's lovely. She is lovely. The children love her. The staff, of course, loves her, so it's going to be a big loss to the culture there.
Anyone else?
My kids, I think their favorite school for food service was Parkview. And it was the staff and food made and served with love, so thank you to Linda for all of her work there.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Linda's retire, I probably should say her name. How do you say it again? Girar? Girar? Okay, retirement with regret.
O'Neil, second.
Okay, and I need a vote.
O'Neil, yes?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Cabral. The next one I was going to do is Janice Cardoza.
Okay, Parkview again. So Mr. Cedarbaum is, has a few holes to fill. Janice Cardoza's been with the Easton Public Schools for 13 years. She's been a paraprofessional at Parkview. She plans to retire at the end of this school year.
Okay, dear Dr. Cabral, it is my intent to retire at the end of the school year. I have genuinely enjoyed working these past 13 years at Parkview Elementary School. I will truly miss the students, their hugs, high fives, and all my colleagues. Although in this new normal, it's hard not to be able to say goodbye in person. I am looking forward to the next chapter in my life, having grandchildren and traveling with my husband. I wish the Easton Public Schools all the best in the years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of Easton Public Schools, Janice Cardoza. Now, Janice used to be a neighbor of mine, so, and I know her kids. And actually, her son is the one that's doing the work for ECAT in the auditorium. That's pretty cool. But Janice is a lovely person and we will miss her.
Yes, and you can tell from these letters, the love that they have for the students, that these are, we constantly talk about the professionals that we have here in Easton, and I think even if you don't know them, just their letters reflect that.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the retirement of Janice Cardoza.
Wiseman, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
On, O'Neil, yes?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the next one I have is Heather Willis.
Sorry, I thought I was on mute. Heather Willis is also a paraprofessional. She began with the Easton Public Schools 26 years ago, and she worked at Parkview Elementary School for the past 24 years. She also plans to retire on June 30th.
Dear Dr. Cabral, I am writing to inform you of my intent to retire from Easton Public Schools. I plan on retiring at the end of this school year. I have worked at Parkview School for the past 24 years. I was very fortunate to have the same classroom parat job in PAL, KED, and Full Day Kindergarten. I work with an amazing group of people. We truly are a community, colleagues, parents, and children. Everyone cares and is supportive of each other. I have taught many, many children through the years, and to say that they made me happy would be an understatement. The children's smiles, their stories, their excitement, and their passion brought me joy each and every day. So I write this with mixed emotions. Due to the uncertainty of what school will be like next year, I believe this is the right choice for me. I will truly miss my kids. This is the most rewarding job I have ever had. So I leave you with this. Remember, there is good in every child. Be kind, be loving, be joyful. Lead by example, and you will make a difference. Thanks for allowing me to be part of an amazing community. Heather Willis. Heather's awesome. She's awesome.
Fabulous paraprofessional. I see all the hands shooting up. Fabulous paraprofessional. Again, part of the fabric of the Parkview community, and she will be dearly missed. You can tell that you do not, you cannot pretend to have that kind of joy for children and for what you do. And you could tell every time you saw Heather working with her students.
Jackie?
So Mrs. Willis was the paraprofessional in my son's kindergarten class, and she was just amazing. He loved her. She was so good with all the kids. She just, I don't even know how to describe it, but she just really engaged them. She gave them all kinds of opportunities. She worked, did art with, I mean, she was just, she was wonderful.
She really, and to work with that age for so long, oh my goodness, you know, they're wonderful little kids, but, ooh. Jen, did you have your hand up? Caroline, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say she is truly a lovely person, and she was one of those educators who really was way back in the PAL program, which was at the time, cutting-edge, and was part of what brought us increasingly forward in getting accredited and then going on to the KED and Full Day. So I think she has been instrumental, really, in, you know, kind of our progress in the early education area. And aside from being just a lovely person who obviously loved kids.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to accept Heather Willis's retirement with regret.
O'Neil, second. They all kind of wait. Give it to Jen. O'Neil, yes?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, and we have one more retirement, and then I'm going to ask Joe Bowman to, apparently the screen on the ECAT view is not in grid mode, and I don't know how we fix that, but it only, like, it's on me right now because I'm speaking, but they want to watch all of us, so I don't know who fixes that, but we need to get it on grid mode. Okay, Dr. Cabral, one more. Al Harrison.
Yep, Alan Harrison, or Al Harrison, has been with EPS for 22 years. He's currently a custodian at the Richardson Olmsted School. Plans to retire on June 26th.
So this is a great retirement letter. Like, we've had a few of these. Hi, I will be retiring from RRO Eastern Public Schools as of June 28th, 26th, 2020. Al Harrison. So Al Harrison, I have to tell you, he's been a custodian at RRO for a long time, kind of been around. But he came in and like painted rooms and fixed the, like, all the time. Nobody would even ask. He just is a great guy, and, you know, he has a wonderful family, and we're going to miss him, definitely.
Yes, he is quite a gentleman, to be sure. He's always amicable and sociable, and yes, he volunteers to get things done or just has the initiative to do them. That, it is a huge loss at Richardson Olmsted.
Yeah.
His interaction even with the kids and staff is fantastic, so he's wonderful, wonderful person.
Does anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I remember all the custodial staff at RRO, but it was the one but it was the one school where we used to have these enormous, enormous, overwhelming family events. So it was the Harry Potter nights and dancing through the decades, and, you know, it would, they would, it'd be split up because the capacity was too much. We couldn't fit everybody there, and my gosh, the, the patience, the grace of putting up with having, you know, eight hundred people come into that school and destroy the cafeteria. And, you know, we would set up these crazy things in the classrooms and the library, and they just were, he, he and his, and the rest of the staff were always so gracious with, you know, letting the PTAs and the PACs and the, you know, the school leadership kind of do these kind of crazy huge events for the kids and the families, and always stuck around, you know, the last one out the door at, well, well past midnight, cleaning up, uh, ice cream and pizza and cupcakes. And just really phenomenal, phenomenal group.
Okay, uh, anyone else? Oh, Caroline, go ahead.
Uh, I, I did see him often because of, you know, lots of meetings being there and so on. Just such a friendly, agreeable, engaging guy. Um, but Jen, I guess that means you were there a lot of times till midnight, too. That doesn't surprise me.
Those Harry Potter nights, man.
All right, very good. All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Al Harrison.
Durant, second.
Okay, and all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, COVID-nineteen update, Dr. Cabral. You're on mute. Dr. Cabral, you're on mute. You're on.
I have a quick slide to share. It is at the beginning of the budget presentation that I'm going to do. So I'll just show this very quickly. So we have had a lot of questions about, you know, have we thought about the fall? We absolutely are, yes. We're, we're trying to really kind of limp over the finish line of the school year right now, to be perfectly honest with you. We are also working really very hard on our budget. So we're, we're, we're literally triaging at this point, but yes, of course, we have started looking to the fall. We have been doing research. We have been meeting in our peer groups. We had a meeting with the commissioner. And there's actually a lot going on behind the scenes that I realized, people, why would they be aware of that? They're probably not aware of that. So I am, uh, trying to get to the point where I can write up a quick email and send it to everyone and let them know what we're preparing. Right now, we have reopening and repopulation working groups. We, all we've done to this point is identify the groups that we're going to have. Facilities and Supplies, that one does have asterisks because that is one that I designated as needing to meet first. And so they have, they had, if we had our first meeting this Wednesday. That and all of these other committees are made up of a cross-section of people. They're not finalized yet. But they include, depending on the group, it depends, uh, depending on the group, it includes members of the community, parents, police, fire, DPW, custodial staff, professionals in the district, administrators, teachers, nurses, and so forth. The Facilities and Supplies is going to be working on not only the facilities in terms of disinfection, but also in terms of preparation. We're not sure yet exactly what the fall's going to look like. So whether it's the social distancing, whether it's the furniture that needs to be used or spaced, whether it is, um, the providing hand sanitizer and so forth. All of those things would be under Facilities. And then Supplies, of course, are gonna be all of the things that we will need that are, to keep our students and staff safe. PPE, anything else that needs to be purchased. For example, Plexiglas dividers. We, we actually have started doing that in our offices. All of those things will be considered at length in this group. The reason the others haven't been put together yet, other than the fact that we're trying to get through the last two weeks of school, week and a half, is that the commissioner had a meeting with us this week and was extremely clear that in mid-June, his working group is going to forty-five or forty-six people, is going to be putting out guidance, uh, not guidance, excuse me, typically it's guidance. This time, he was extremely clear that it's going to be a prescribed protocol for returning to school in the fall, including things like which supplies are needed. There was also a conversation about, uh, the economy of scale and perhaps all districts working together to order the same supplies and getting discounts and purchasing that way. So the commissioner is working on things like that, and so that's why it really is, um, counterproductive to have all of these groups working in earnest right now because we don't yet have that directive. And so we don't want to create too much that then has to be scaled back or completely reworked based on the fact that he has made it clear that it is going to be prescriptive, and we are gonna need to follow it. The reason I had Facilities and Supplies get together first was because regardless of what the commissioner's directives are going to be in the, in the task force, there are some things that are, as information, we haven't collected just yet. For example, how many of certain things are we gonna need? How many students? How many teachers? Uh, what are the areas in, in schools that might need the Plexiglas or might need some sort, form of protection, whatever the commissioner determines it's gonna be? What are our largest areas? What are our areas that perhaps don't have, um, optimal ventilation or water supply? So those are things that, it was, it was really doing, uh, taking stock and doing a, a current reality for us that I wanted them to get together first. And so that's why they met this week. They're probably not gonna meet again until after, um, the June fifteenth to twentieth date that we'll be getting that directive. And then the other categories, of course, we have teaching and learning. That is going to be, we've decided that regardless, again, regardless of what happens, there really are only three viable options for going back to school in September. One is going to be complete physical occupation of the buildings. Another is going to be complete remote learning, and the third, of course, is a hybrid, which could have many variations and variables. The Teaching and Learning Group is going to be working on a robust remote learning platform in the event that we are using one in September. But keeping in mind, even if we do use a, even if we do go back to school and don't use remote learning in September, it really isn't out of the realm of possibilities that sometime next winter, we may face the same situation as we may not have, um, treatments and vaccinations in place. So we will have that put in place. We will also be talking about how we might do teaching in person and how that might be different based on, um, certain requirements of social distancing and, and, and conscientious use of facilities. So Teaching and Learning is going to take into account all the best research on remote learning, on strategies for remote learning, on platforms and software, and certainly are going to be working in close cooperation with Facilities and Supplies because we, we find, we, we have found we may need more technology. We may need more software. We, we may need more to help our students and teachers to access the remote learning effectively. It's also very important that they consider, how do we teach going forward, knowing that students missed, you know, almost four months of school? And how do we close those teaching gaps? And so that's gonna be part of the conversation there. The next subgroup is gonna be technology. That's gonna be not only for the technical aspects of technology, but also procurement. So we're, we're, we want to make sure that everyone in the district is funneling information to this one group. They are going to keep stock of not only what we have, but what we get back from students at the end of the school year. They'll be sharing a plan for trying to get equipment back from students. We've, um, let almost three hundred people borrow devices. We, uh, they will also be considering, again, what remote learning might look like going forward. Who do we not have devices for? Uh, making sure that our staff has the correct, have the correct devices. We have had staff that have had difficulty because they don't either have the most up-to-date software in their computer to be able to run Zoom, for example, um, or to, um, to run some of the software that they're recommending that the children use, or to have a camera for Google Meet. And so we not only need to make sure that our students have all the right equipment, but our staff members as well. And then Special Education, again, how are we going to provide the, excuse me, how are we going to provide the, um, services that we really weren't able to provide so far in this, uh, environment, that we have been, um, trying to assess what kinds of services students are going to need to, um, to get back to where they were, if not to get ahead? And how are we going to provide those services that were very tricky for us this time around? Like occupational therapy, physical therapy, even speech? And have a plan for how we might be able to provide those services, even if some students are in person while the rest of the school is, is remote. So they're gonna consider an awful lot of, um, different medium and modalities for providing these services to students. And then social, emotional, and physical wellness. While this typically falls under the Special Education or Student Services Department, we are, have already realized that this is gonna be a significant concern for us in the fall, regardless of which of the three scenarios we're gonna be utilizing. We already have students that are facing a lot of social, emotional, uh, challenges and frankly crises right now, and, as well as physical wellness. So we need to make sure that our spaces, they'll, again, work in close contact with Special Education, also Teaching and Learning. The overarching reopening and repopulation committee is gonna be putting together the information of all the groups. But social, emotional, and physical wellness is made up right now primarily of our Special Education coordinators and the Director of Student Services. They will be taking a look at, you know, how can we make sure that our students are not only supported when they're in school, but also remotely, which of course, like many of these other aspects, creates a much more challenging environment. What about students that we have trouble connecting with? What about those that are, have become disengaged or don't have a supportive network at home that can help them to be engaged with the learning online? So, um, that's gonna be part of the work of that group. Finances. So we do have some CARES Act funds at the town level, and we have, it's been honestly almost another position to try to keep track of materials and resources we need in ordering them, but also parceling out what's coming out of the budget, what comes out of the capital budget for the town, and what comes out of CARES Act. Honestly, trying to keep up with what is allowed, what isn't allowed, the legislation on this, uh, how to submit for these funds. It, it's been quite an endeavor. And so we have everyone working to try to make sure that anything we can submit for CARES Act refund, we are. They have, we, we have learned that it isn't only for things like PPE, but also for any programs or, or even therapies or services for students that help to reduce the gap that was created by the closures due to COVID. Uh, materials for online learning, for example. So all of those things are going to be, um, going through one place just to make sure all of these groups are not just putting out purchase orders or perhaps overlapping one another in what they're getting for the district. Obviously, under this economic time and the budget constraints that we're feeling right now, it's essential that we really keep a tight, a, a tight focus on the finances. And then communication and outreach, and that, of course, is to make sure because it's very easy to forget sometimes when you're in the thick of things, and there's a million, there are millions spinning plates in the air, and they're all very critical and important. And, uh, to just make sure that we're constantly pushing out this information to people, that we're communicating with them, that we're able to collect any questions that they have. As all of you know, I've had been quite challenged with my email. Not only have I been inundated during this time because people are, it's difficult for them to contact me in person or come into our office, but I am now, with the most recent developments in our country, been getting a lot of emails, a lot of form letters and templates from people, um, asking for information or wondering what we're doing or how are we gonna address this? And unfortunately, my email's a bit shut down right now. So how can we make sure we're collecting that information, um, in a way that is effective so that we can appropriately respond to people and so that we can, um, make sure the information going out is going out from one place, even though we have a lot of groups working? So, again, the only one that actually has met once is Facilities and Supplies, and that was really just to share concerns and to do a, a, a current reality of all of our facilities and our supplies. The others will not be meeting, again, I just want to be clear. The reason they're not meeting is because we're waiting until after mid-March, probably around the teens or the twentieth, because we have to wait for the task force directives that are coming from the commissioner, who's made it clear that he expects us to follow those that we are gonna be receiving from them.
I don't want to interrupt you. You mean mid-June?
Yes.
Mid-June.
Mid-June, yeah. March is kind of a scar in my brain right now.
A scar, exactly.
Yeah. So in mid-June, um, so we will be looking for, there are some of those that we're looking for participation, um, for example, Teaching and Learning. Um, we were looking, Chrissy Pruitt, the Assistant Superintendent, is running that, and she is reaching out to a couple of parents to be on that. But as you can imagine, all of these groups already have seventeen to twenty-one people on them, and we're already in a virtual environment as it is. So we really want to make sure that these are extremely focused and productive groups. So we may have, while we may only have one representative from each stakeholder group participating, we are really depending on those people to go back and share with their constituents or their, like, like groups, or their job-like peers, and then coming back to the group with information because obviously it's, it's just something that we are very short on time. Um, and we, we have to have very targeted goals, and we have to have, they have to produce, um, and turn around in a, in a quick, um, in a quick manner. So there, they are just between people that we've reached out on, on the town side and on the school side. They're, they're quite full, but there still are some, um, chairs of these committees that are reaching out to, um, solidify the group before we actually start having those meetings. So I just wanted to remind people that, of course, we are, um, thinking about the fall, but there are very specific reasons why we don't have a plan out yet in addition to the fact that even if the commissioner's plan is out in mid-June, as we all know, this is a moving target, or as I've called it, chasing a speeding bullet. And in order to really make sure we're doing the best for our students and our staff, uh, we need to make sure we're on top of what happens literally on a daily basis. And what the commissioner gives us in June could be outdated in July. We really don't know. So we're gonna have to kind of bob and weave with this. Um, but we definitely have our eyes on it. We definitely have some good people in place to work on it, and we will definitely be pushing out information probably in July. Jackie?
Jackie?
I just was wondering if when the commissioner's, um, information comes out, if it's something, if he is prescribing things that we may not be able to do either because of our facilities or because of our budget, what happens then?
There is an option for us, let me just get off-share screen here. There is an option for us to put in a, he, he did say that if there was something we felt was truly extraordinary, it truly extraordinary that it, we just, it wasn't possible for us to do it, then we could put in a, he called it, we could make a case for doing something different. I, I have to tell you that he was very, very clear that, um, that this was purposefully prescriptive, that there was a reason why the task force felt it was important for all of us to be doing the same thing. And he said that, you know, ninety, he expected at least ninety percent, we're gonna do it as is. And if anybody felt that it was really prohibitive in any way, we could try to make a case, but it would need to be approved by the commissioner before we could do it. And if anybody felt that it was really prohibitive in any way, we could try to make a case, but it would need to be approved by the commissioner before we could do it.
Caroline?
This is related to what Jackie asked. Some of what I've read seems to indicate that from a legal perspective, school districts in Massachusetts are pretty autonomous. So certainly we'd have to adhere to state prescriptions up to a point. But I was thinking about specifically the decision about whether to open schools in the fall. Because there will be, depending on the rate of infection in the given area, depending on a whole lot of other factors. That kind of decision can't be a, you know, everybody in the Commonwealth follows this prescription. And I know that a lot of what the commissioner looks at are what's going on in major metropolitan areas or big cities. And would not necessarily be optimal or applicable to a district like Easton. And in fact, I honestly feel that some of the earlier guidelines, I know they weren't exactly prescriptions in terms of the remote learning were kind of inadequate. And I think we kind of adopted them without necessarily questioning them, but it has left me with a little less than entirely well, than entire confidence in everything that the commissioner's group comes up with. Simply because, you know, they're trying to create a guidelines or prescriptions for the entire Commonwealth and that just doesn't make sense. But getting back to my first point, I think that legally we may not have to do everything the commissioner says, and I really kind of want to make that point.
He did use a couple of examples of exemptions and they were the ones you just said. If, for example, your district was in a better situation than the rest of the state or there were more cases than elsewhere in the state. Those are examples of things that he would accept, so they are considering that. And an important thing to remember is while it may not be a legal responsibility, we do get quite a bit of funding at the state level. And we have, past history has told us that non-compliance with directives typically is tied to funding.
Although so far we've gotten a pittance from the state relatively speaking, and in addition to that, we haven't actually been penalized financially, although I know that that's always an you know, a possibility and not one that we'd like to face. My second question has to do with the facilities committee. I know that you made the suggestion that I maybe become involved in that. I didn't realize how I was supposed to make that happen. So this is just about my situation, but should I get in touch with David? Because I actually do have a lot of information about that.
Yes, exactly. David's the chair of the committee.
Okay, can can I just call him then?
You can, yeah, you can nail him, sure.
Okay, okay, just thanks a lot. Thank you.
And can we just reiterate those three scenarios? I know you talked about it before.
Okay, going back to school physically a hundred percent. Being one hundred percent remote online like we are right now. Or a hybrid and the hybrid has probably an infinite number of possibilities.
And and no, and no decisions has been made yet, right? Because I get, I get things from people. I heard this, I heard that, I go, I don't think you heard it from everybody, so. Any other questions for Dr. Cabral? All right, that was awesome. Thank you so much. I know we have a big mountain to climb, but we're going to get through it. Okay. Budget update with possible vote, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, I'm going to get back to my slides here. So I'm calling this, as you can see, the post-COVID amended budget proposal because it's very different than any of the budget presentations I've done to date. I'm not going to show you a lot of data. I'm not going to tell you what we need and what we don't have. We aren't even at that point. We are really just trying, we're we're just struggling to make it through next year at this point. So if you take a look at this, I just wanted to update you. Connor Reed, the town administrator, recently presented to the Board of Selectmen and updated or a budget change memorandum as of Tuesday. Couple of things or a few things here that are important to note. State aid forecasts, we had gone under the presumption to date that we would be at negative four point four billion dollars in state revenue, which of course translates to what we're going to receive to support the school district. That estimate has been inflated at this point to approximately six billion dollars. So that is obviously very bad news. In terms of local receipts from Easton currently were over five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars down from the receipts received in FY twenty. They, Connor has the most recent butter budget iteration with stabilization funds of five hundred thousand dollars in it and nine hundred and nine thousand dollars from free cash. The town budget, they reduced from three point eight percent to one point four percent. And the schools, we have reduced our budget from four percent to two percent. So that was a cut of almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That resulted from several reductions in force that I will outline shortly. And that combined has brought the budget deficit from two point four million to one point zero zero seven seven million. So we're still not there. And we have a week to get there. So at this point, I would like to share. Well, we're just going to skip this. We're we're actually off this chart this time. Actually regressive. We're sort of beyond regressive. I actually never created a model for where we are right now. Certainly wasn't anticipated by anyone, but we are decidedly regressive. We did have some salary concessions which helped us in that reduction. District leadership. Two point, we have frozen our salary by two point five percent for FY twenty-one. The cabinet, which is made up of central office administrators and the principals have frozen for two percent. The food service unit froze between two and two and a half percent. There's, their salary scale is a little bit different, so it's a slight range within the unit. Central office secretarial staff have conceded one point five percent of their salary increase next year. Custodial has responded at zero percent. And you know that tonight we have executive session for pending concessions from Unit A, paraprofessionals, Unit B, which is made up of the assistant principals and the specialized coordinators out and the direct director of guidance and the secretarial, secretarial clerical unit. So again, those concessions in their salaries have helped us to close the margin to the point that we have so far. In addition, we have these eliminated positions in the district. I won't read them to you, but you can see that at Parkview, we've lost two and a half. We've reduced both of the half-day kindergarten programs in the district. Our numbers are very small there right now and it doesn't justify having a teacher at this point. Normally, what we would do is keep a teacher in that position and potentially have a small class, which is not awful for kindergarten. We just can't afford it right now. So if we get half-day students, what we're going to do is we're going to revisit. You know, we'll we'll get in touch with these with these folks and see if they are interested in having their students attend full-day kindergarten. If they do not qualify for free tuition or if they're just not interested in paying the tuition, we are going to have sort of a split model where we'll have students attend a full-day kindergarten class literally for half the day and then leave. So that is how we're choosing to sort of mitigate that issue. We also have three teachers at Center School, one of course is the half-day kindergarten teacher. Moreau Hall has two. And Richardson Olmstead also has two. So for PK to five classes, what this does is just essentially, we, it just increases the level of the number of students in every class. It's very simple. So class sizes will be a little bit higher than, or they will be higher than they would have been if we had kept these positions. At OA, we had an industrial arts position. That is actually a retirement, and so that is going to be by attrition. And we are not going to be refilling that position. And then in addition, we had three ABA or behavior techs, four paraprofessional positions and partial custodian. We reduced the hours of a custodian. So that comes out to a total of sixteen point seven five FTE or full-time equivalents. So for example, the two half, the two point five or half-day people with the point two five is the point seven five, for example. It is actually nineteen people that are affected. And then what we did was had a couple of positions that are additions. We had a large class moved to the second grade at Moreau Hall and if we were going to have twenty-seven to thirty some odd students in the class. So there's an addition of a second grade teacher. The same thing is true of the middle school for sixth grade. Because an entire OA industrial arts position is being reduced, that does leave many students without some elective choices. And so we'll go back and take a look at second, third choice for students in terms of what they're choosing for classes. Some students, we actually had an overabundance of students that had registered originally for our media production. So we will, the the person who's in that role now is a point six. So we won't add a person, we will just add point four. It's not the same, of course, of having a full teacher as industrial arts. But it is an attempt to mitigate those elective courses at the high school. And finally, the only new position really in the district is the therapeutic learning center, school adjustment counselor. And this person, we currently have one professional who splits their time between the TLC program at RO and the TLC program at the middle school. That person will go to the middle school full-time. That means RO will have a full-time adjustment counselor for the therapeutic program. We felt that this just was something that could not be avoided. The special education team got together and it was, it was such a strong recommendation. This has implications of resulting in a real lack of student services, potential injuries, potential social, emotional crises for students. And we just didn't feel that regardless of the budget constraints, it wasn't worth the risk of not serving these students appropriately. So that's an addition of three point one FTE, but it's it's just an addition of one staff member. In other words, a teacher for one of the eliminated positions on the left will move to the grade two. Someone on the left will move to the grade six. The media person is already there part-time, it'll just increase. So the only new person is this school adjustment counselor. Any questions about these? Okay. So that takes us to the current proposal. We are currently at a proposal of forty-two million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars for next year, which represents a two percent increase over FY twenty. I just want to remind you that when we started this whole budget process and presented to you back in January, just three, three point four one percent of it was the rollover. And what I mean by rollover is just our contractual increases, whether it's collective bargaining or wastewater treatment plant or transportation or legal, these are contracts that increase marginally every year. And so just to get to two percent, we obviously are not at level service. We're below level service. We are at least almost one and a half percent below level service. And so it's already been very difficult to get that far. In executive session, we are going to talk about some of the remaining concessions. And because it's a point of negotiation, we will be talking about it in executive session and to see where we can potentially get from that two percent. Two percent does reflect a lot of money. So we are hopeful that we have some things provided that you can potentially take another vote this evening on the budget. Or at least approve us to speak to town administrator about amended percentage. Any questions?
Do you, so if we vote on this right now?
I don't think you actually have a vote, to correct myself, I don't actually think you have a vote on the agenda.
It says possible vote.
Okay, then you do have a possible on the agenda. The problem is our executive session is after this. And so you already, you could vote on the two percent, but I'm about to present some new information to you, so.
So we don't want to vote right now. Okay, but what, when would you like the vote to be done? For example, does Connor need something right away? When do you need, I mean, it'd be nice to have a vote, but do you need it right now or?
We need it as soon as possible, but.
We're not meeting next Thursday. So we could set up a different day to meet.
No, Thursday should be fine.
That's what I'm saying, next Thursday, when we're we're all at a different conference next Thursday.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So we could pick a different day though and meet then and then vote if you'd like.
Yeah, we would need a day next week.
Okay.
We would need a day next week.
Okay. Michelle, you have, there's a question coming in. Michelle, do you want to, or Dr. Cabral? Can you check the question on the Q and A?
Looking at it, yeah. Okay. There's a question from Jane Martin. Can you please connect the change in staffing to impacts on programming? Do you expect that the district will be able to support the same programs, class offerings, et cetera, given these reductions? It it's a great question. Normally, so I'll start, I'll start with elementary. Normally, we would try to keep our class sizes low. We have been doing that for several years and we got to a place where they really, really were much more manageable. There's no question in the research that the amount of time now, nowadays, even different from when I was teaching eight years ago. It is extremely time-consuming and very important that the teachers are addressing students on a personal level. They have social, emotional needs that are different than ever before. They're incorporating technology and the like. With the potential that we're going to have a COVID have COVID protocols, if you will, to ultimately get in the building physically, it just compounds that issue multiple, it 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 is exponential. Because if we had eighteen or nineteen students in a classroom and now there are twenty-three, well, we can only fit about ten or eleven in classrooms spaced six feet apart or twelve at the most with some of our classrooms. So even if we were to do some kind of hybrid, have half the students, don't have the other half. Now we're at a point where we are really pushing the envelope in terms of the number of students in the classes. So it definitely is, is, it's not good timing. This would have been a great year to have really manageable or or as low as possible class sizes. So the impact of that is, it remains to be seen, but it certainly does not bode well for social distancing. And in terms of the secondary schools, certainly it is impactful on our course offerings, not only our course offerings, but I mean, we're clearly limiting our course offerings now. We're not replacing a position that that many students are going to be impacted because they had signed up for that. There's really not anything exactly like it in the school. And it it reduces their choices. We are trying to mitigate it a little bit, but it's with a very different kind of programming and it's not going to be the full amount of students that can be taken. So class sizes will increase there. We also had reduced a position last year by attrition in the science department, if you remember, and we had quite a problem with that. And we had quite a problem with that this year. We had to eliminate some electives. We had some arguably less than perfectly safe lab environments. We weren't able to um, cover as much curriculum because students performing labs, for example, each student has to perform the lab. And so you're waiting twice as long for students to get things finished. And so less curriculum is able to be covered. So because we weren't able to actually put that position back this year, even though we didn't cut a science position this year, it's definitely not a good situation going forward for the science department. So uh, I guess in a nutshell, we are very limited and it provides, we're we're limited in programming and it provides significantly more challenges in a post-COVID school environment in terms of physical proximity. And we are moving away from those smaller class sizes that we've been working several years to try to attain.
Jane, uh, Jen, sorry, Jen.
Um, so the, was it four power positions?
So just, can you, can you talk a little bit about how those were identified? Like, is it, you know, students who no longer need services or will get services through other programs?
No, actually, we, two of them, uh, I'm trying to remember now. Uh, no, it, in terms of the ABA texts, we removed two of them from therapeutic learning program. While we do have a school adjustment counselor, it certainly is preferable to also have ABA texts available as well, but we reduce them from there. So that's a reduction in services. Uh, the paraprofessionals, actually, we were on a, a call earlier today. Teresa Skinner, the director of student services, is actually still reassigning paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals by contract need to be notified by um, August, I think it's August fifteenth. They need to note, be notified at some point in August what their assignment is going to be for the next year. Obviously, we never try to wait that long. However, we, under the circumstances, there are, clearly, there are a lot of things going on. I did have to send out reduction enforced notices to all professional staff this week. So we did have to put off the paraprofessionals. Right now, we're also holding off on whether we're going to fill any of those positions, not only because of the budget, but because we really don't know what to expect in the fall. We are creating a series of surveys for parents that I hope all parents will please take a moment to fill out, which is going to be asking questions like, y- you know, if school is held physically, do parents expect that they will drive their children to school or will they be using transportation? If they will, you know, how many, how many students we can expect to be in school? How many feel that they have some sort of concern about being in school? And so we're really waiting to see. We also have um, kindergarten. We, we weren't, kindergarten's always our wild card. It makes me nervous every year because you never know who's going to show up. A lot of people who are not part of the school system, if their five-year-old child or four-year-old child is getting ready to go into kindergarten, it might be their first experience with the school system. They don't, they don't subscribe to our information. We're, they're not on our listserv for our push, push out notifications. And we try very hard to get in touch with them, but there are a lot of people that show up literally right before school starts and says that, you know, my child is probably supposed to be starting kindergarten, can you sign them up? And so it's always a tight, a tight rope walk of whether we're going to be stuck in September needing another teacher or if we're going to be really stuck for large class sizes. We weren't able to have our regular registration this year. We didn't have it in person, we haven't done any screenings. We are completely in the dark right now in terms of if the numbers we have are what it is going to be in the fall. So we may find, you know, we're, we're retaining one of the kindergarten teachers um, in the hopes that we don't get too many students for that class. We may even get to a point, to be perfectly honest, because of, because we're cutting it so close in the three schools that we may even have to have an option where we um, provide the opportunity for students in two other schools to bring their child to a newly opened kindergarten in a third school. Because we can't level them out completely among the three schools because we're cutting it that close right now. So um, so we're really, the bottom line is we're really not sure what we're doing with Paris yet, but we're holding off right now. But I do know Teresa Skinner has been working on it with the principals and they are reallocating where students are going. It's not, it is not a situation where, oh, we found the savings, this is great. A student had a one-on-one and they left and we don't need this position anymore. It's, we're not replacing these positions right now because we don't have the money to do it. Is there a way we can get around it so we don't have to?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
You have another one in the chat box.
And they question and answer.
Another one from Jane.
Can you give an update on circuit breaker money? Does the district expect more or less from the state in this category and how will this impact the operation, operating budget? Uh, okay, so I might have exaggerated, my only tight rope is not kindergarten, my other tight rope is always circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is, I certainly can go in more detail if you'd like, but a quicker, quickest version is it's a funding source that reimburse, reimburses a portion of special education expenses. The problem is that the legislation calls for that to be funded at seventy percent every year. And we have had years when it's been less than seventy percent and that is extremely problematic for us. Because obviously, the only funds we have to close that gap are, are operating funds. It has been said that this year that is in peril because, because frankly, of the lack in state revenue, as I explained um, pre, in the previous slides. So we don't know yet what it is going to be, um, even seventy percent. And by the way, I just want to make it clear that seventy percent doesn't mean we get seventy percent reimbursement. It just means the circuit breaker is funded at seventy percent. We actually um, we pay about the, usually about the first forty thousand dollars of a student's placement. And then we receive um, a reimbursement of what's above that. So if a child um, has a placement, that's a hundred thousand dollar placement, we pay for the first forty thousand dollars. And then we receive the circuit breaker reimbursement for the remaining sixty thousand dollars. So that will be extremely difficult for us if we don't get that, but we do not have that information yet.
Thank you. Any other questions from, oh, Caroline, go ahead, I see your.
Just, Leisha, just a clarification, we received seventy percent of the additional sixty thousand, right?
Seventy percent of the sixty thousand, yeah.
Right.
Not seventy percent of the students.
Now, the way you said it, it sounded like we received the whole sixty thousand, but it's only seventy percent of the sixty thousand. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So if it gets funded at sixty percent, we get sixty percent of the sixty thousand. Well, that's why it's so concerning. And of course, if a student's in a thirty nine thousand dollar placement, we get nothing, so.
Right.
And that doesn't include transportation, sorry.
So one other question. One other question, I was a little bit unclear about the, the kindergarten issue. I understand that, of course, we can't do screenings and all of that. But is there some sort of mechanism in place? I mean, I think preschool's been closed also. So those were often the source of information for parents about how to, you know, register and so on, once their children reached kindergarten age. So how are, how are we publicizing the need for people to let us know that they have newly um, well, new, new kindergarteners coming in in the fall, one way or another, either remotely or in person? And um, can we use things like maybe the town crier or something like that to just kind of let parents who, who may not have other children in the system, so they may kind of be out of the loop, uh, know about the kindergarten registrations, particularly since we don't have the preschools now to, to kind of inform parents?
Yeah, and the preschools actually are, are a minority of the students we get in kindergarten. They really, it's, it's a much more, it's a much smaller program. Uh, it's a special education program with much fewer community.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I meant the preschools, the private and.
Oh, in town, oh, yes, yeah. So we have reached out, yeah, we've reached out to the YMCA, all of the PKs, we've publicized it. I think it was in the town crier, actually, at some point. Um, the principals have been working hard on getting that information out. We usually publicize it outside of PKs anyway. Uh, we, we put up notices around town and whatnot, but it's just been particularly challenging now because what would happen is we would advertise the registration and the orientations and people would come to that because they would see them advertised, but we didn't, we didn't have them. So um, we're, we're just struggling to get the word out and hoping that, I mean, obviously, we'll accept children who walk in on September tenth even. So we're going to take the children, we just need to get the word out and um, that they really need to contact their schools as soon as possible, their, their neighborhood school as soon as possible and register their kindergartner.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, um, very good. So we'll discuss this more in executive session. Uh, public comment, are there any other Q and As that we need to answer in the uh, question thing?
There's not an answer, but there is a post from Ken, no last name. I think I know who it is, but I don't want to presume. Uh, it says, on behalf of the Richardson Olmstead family, we will greatly miss Al, and that's absolutely true.
Very good, thank you. And that's it?
Yes, I think that is a, an amazing um, colleague that is making that.
Thank you. All right. Superintendent notes?
Uh, no, that's it for now.
Thank you, um, Chrissy's not here. Uh, school committee notes, Caroline, you're first.
Um, okay, let me make sure I'm, okay. Um, I attended by Zoom yesterday, the uh, follow-up security uh, focus group for the school planning committee. Uh, and I have to say, Fort Knox will have nothing on our new elementary school. Uh, we've just got incredible amounts of di- different kinds of security for different reasons. But it was really impressive how the various consultants had, you know, how much thought they had put into what makes sense for an early elementary school. And uh, just to, to mention that both floors will have panic devices, cameras, but not in sensitive areas, motion detectors and um, let's see, well, I forget what the fourth thing was, but they'll, there, there's a really comprehensive security system that's going to be in place. Both to protect kids, obviously, from the thing that all of us fear, of course, is any kind of intrusion, but also just uh, making sure that what's going on in the building is uh, keeping kids safe. So it's very impressive and uh, I I guess that was on ECAT, so maybe people, I'm not, no, I'm not sure that the focus groups were on ECAT, but um, I'm sure that people could get their questions answered very easily if they wanted to email the um, school planning committee, the main uh, email. I just, just want to mention that that was a very impressive meeting and very comprehensive.
It was, yes. The security, though, I do want to note, as uh, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, there will be several components of the plan that aren't going to be released to the public. So while I realize everyone's interest in knowing as much as possible, not only that, but even some of the plans and designs from this point going forward are going to be less shared online in this, in this format. And that, again, was part of the conversation. It's important to maintain the integrity of the security that we have in place. It was very comprehensive, as Caroline said, really something. But not in any way intimidating or scary. I mean, it's pretty obvious.
No, no, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's very welcoming, loving, nurturing environment. And they have been able to incorporate all of these elements in that. So students will be none the wiser.
Right.
Caroline, anything else from you?
Nope, thank you.
Hey, Michelle.
I did not have anything at this time.
Okay. Um, I know tomorrow, I know Dr. Cabral and I are going to be up at the high school taping the class night, which should have been last night, but um, we'll be doing that tomorrow. So that will be presented on ECAT. So look for that.
Oh, that's tomorrow?
We're taping it tomorrow, yeah?
Yeah, okay, great.
Presentation is the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not live, they're just recording it tomorrow.
They're just recording it, that's all. So it'll be on ECAT at some point. Okay, Caroline.
Uh, I, I should have mentioned this, I, I do want to congratulate the Raising Multicultural Kids Organization for the wonderful vigil that they put in place um, Sunday to uh, you know, recognize the really tragic consequences of racism in our country and specifically, of course, to honor the George Floyd who was killed in a really um, shockingly awful incident. And I guess there's a, another um, memorials, well, it's, it's kind of a recognition of the same issues that's taking place uh, this coming Sunday, am I correct? At the high school?
Uh, it's not a high school event?
No, no, I know, I know it's not, it's not a school event per se. It's just, it's, isn't it student um, initiated?
Uh, it's initiated by a student and we have put them in contact with the police department so they can make sure that they are appropriately supported. I don't have the details of the plan just yet, though.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Michelle, you're okay, I'm all set. Jackie?
Yeah, I know, Caroline talked about what I was going to talk about, so I have nothing else at this time.
Well, I, so Jackie, I thought you were going to talk about the MASC thing that we attended.
Is there anything you can talk about with that? We have. It was really, Nancy and I were on a MASC, Mass Association of School Committees Zoom meeting on the future of remote learning. Very excited to be on it, was really looking forward to it. Nope.
Not what we expected.
It was really more based on districts coming together in Western Mass to work together on everything that had nothing to do with us, so um.
We have questions and we're going to make a plan.
Yeah, and we, I think we're going to discuss in a couple of weeks and, and the next couple of weeks meeting about possi- things that Nancy and I had kind of discussed about going forward with our plan. Our idea. Getting districts together in our area, maybe sharing ideas, but, okay, yeah, it'd be better when Chrissy's here too, so.
All right, uh, Jen?
Uh, I think Caroline covered what I was going to mention and, and Jackie did a very nice job presenting remarks on behalf of the school committee. So thank you for representing us well at the vigil um, on Sunday. And thank you to Dr. Cabral for your responsiveness to that. I, I happened to be with one of the organizers that morning, we were, we were on a, a social distancing hike and her phone was blowing up uh, left and right. And it was this, this kind of torrent of information with figuring out where an appropriate location would be, you know, who would be speaking and making statements. And so I, I know that you were instrumental in being responsive to the requests from, um, from the group with some feedback on location and then, of course, with us on um, helping craft a statement. So thank you for your responsiveness. There was a lot of uh, working back and forth that happened on Sunday to make that happen. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments tonight? Okay. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to uh, the meeting to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association's units, A, B, paraprofessionals and the Southeastern Public Employees Association Secretary Clerical Food Service and Custodial Unit. And if you haven't filled out your census, please do so. All right, I need a vote to adjourn.
O'Neil, second.
Oh, thank you.
The motion and then O'Neil, yes.
France, yes.
Deluca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, we'll see you in executive session.